Let the August 2020 Brookhaven Borough Council meeting come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, free, individual, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Mayor, do you have any memorials?
Yes, I do. Let's have a moment of silence for our recently deceased residents of Brookhaven for the month of July. James Granconi Senior, George Lohin, Gail Stafford, Frank Rivera, Joan Rogers Kane. May they rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone from public discussion? Please unmute yourself before you speak and introduce yourself by name and address. Anyone for public discussion?
Peggy, can you unmute yourself?
Mr. Mayor, whose email did we receive?
We received Peggy Cully's email.
Is she on the call?
Let me see if I can unmute her. Can I do that?
Give it a try.
Peggy?
Yes.
Okay, you were on.
Okay.
State your name and address and what you're here for.
Peggy Cully, 4703 Cooper Road, Brookhaven, PA.
Okay, good evening.
I'm here concerning a yard, a neighbor's yard that has not been mowed. It's got weeds up above the roof line, two deserted cars, branches all over the place, dog feces and flies and kids' toys from 15 years ago, all over the yard. I feel it's a health hazard and if I would try to sell my house right now, my house would go for nothing. I am basically also in fear of the homeowner. That's it.
Okay, we have a knowledge of the history of the house. We are working on it. They have been fined. Unfortunately, the courts are now closed, but we do have this on our punch list. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Wills for a deeper explanation. Mr. Wills? Unmute yourself, Jay. Jay is on, is he?
Yeah, Jay's on.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, sir. Go ahead.
Great. I know the code enforcement department is aware of this property. It's my understanding the property owner has been issued a citation or perhaps multiple citations. I would certainly recommend that the code enforcement department continue to issue citations to this property owner each and every day because each and every day the property is noncompliant, results in a violation of the Property Maintenance Code that has been adopted by the Borough of Brookhaven. The council president is correct in that the courts are only partially open. They are hearing a limited number of cases. And a lot of civil complaints and a lot of civil municipal violations unfortunately are being pushed to the side as criminal cases are unfortunately taking precedent in the limited court system that is now opened up here in Delaware County. So I can certainly share the frustration of the property owner. I would also suggest the Borough may look at perhaps hiring. We have ADU Services on staff. If it really is a serious health hazard, then perhaps have ADU Services go on to the property if it needs to be mowed or landscaped. Again, for public health issues that we take that step and then mean the property owner obviously for the cost that the Borough would incur in having ADU Services obviously conduct landscaping services and other property maintenance services affecting this particular property. And again, we have to balance the risk, the public health risk that the surrounding property owners are certainly experiencing. And again, the property owner has certain private property rights, but I think at this point, if the situation continues, that we have to take some extraordinary steps. And again, that may be getting ADU Services involved.
Okay, anyone?
Peggy, are you still there?
Mr. Cully, would you like to speak?
If I may, please.
Say your name and address, please.
My name is Craig Cully. I'm a resident of Tucson, Arizona. My mother Peggy is the person I'm here in support of.
Okay.
I just wanted to point out that I really appreciate Mr. Willis's comments and his directness in how to handle this. But I do want to let the council know and every other member here that this is not a recent problem. This has been something my mother has been dealing with for over 10 years now. 10 years.
We're aware of it. We are aware of it. We're fully aware of it. We have multiple properties that are in.
Let me finish, Mr. Hall.
I am going to let you finish, but I'm also letting you know that we're going to take care of it. But go ahead, sir.
Well, but she's been told that many times before and all he gets is citations and he never pays them and he gets away with it and it continues on. So it's not a matter of if this continues, Mr. Willis was using language that was concerning to me, saying if this continues. I'm saying it has continued. This is it. It's the end. I'm sick of hearing it from my mother. I love her to death. She's a great citizen of that town.
Craig, let me.
You guys need to take care of this. Immediately take care of this.
Craig, let me interject. Let me interject. This is a brand new council. This council has balls. Previous councils were weak with situations like this. We had an issue down on Victor with a hoarder. This property is an absolute disgrace. As of next Monday, the property is going to be cleared up. It is a decades-long problem. Farman's was blighted for 25 years. This council, along with the help of, excuse me, Mr. Wills and a former solicitor, Mr. Stern took care of that. We take blight very seriously, much more seriously than former councils do. We will take care of this property. I promise you that. And your mother.
Can I ask, is the property owner occupied or is the property vacant?
It is occupied.
So there is the property owner in there?
Yep, sure is.
And fails to respond to citations and.
Mr. Grant would better be able to answer that, but I believe that he has at least seven outstanding citations. And that was a text I received from Mr. Grant. Go ahead.
No, it's me. Jay, quick question. If the backyard is covered as well and it's also a corner where a school bus picks up small children, does that escalate us getting service to that residence?
Certainly if the sight lines are affected disproportionately and adversely as a result of whether it be high grass or high weeds or other brush. And yeah, school buses have to traverse that particular corner or that intersection. That's an issue and that's why I'm suggesting that we take it a step further and get ADU Services involved in this particular property. Or perhaps even Pro Cleanout, which I'm going to speak about very, very shortly. And see if they can take steps and then we simply mean the property for the cost of any contractor. We would need to hire for public health and public safety reasons to get some instantaneous satisfaction, certainly for the surrounding property owners.
All right, well, we had successes with the other properties, so let's hammer them starting tomorrow. Is there anyone else that would like to comment on this matter? Please unmute yourself if you do.
I think I'm muted. My name is Teresa Cummings. I live next door to this house at 703 and I just want to reiterate what Peggy has been saying.
Your sound's a little muted. Can you step up to the mic?
Let's see. I might need to turn something off. I'm sorry.
That's all right. Take your time.
Is that any better?
It's a little better. Go ahead.
So I live next door to Peggy, to this house. I live at 703 Marshall. And the backyard has not been, I'm sorry, the backyard has not been cut since the tree work that was done back in last year. There is a dog that lives there. Smell sometimes that comes onto my yard is horrible. The flies are unbelievable. Last year, we had a new desk put on. We could not sit out on a deck and eat without our food being covered in flies. So we just went inside. This year with COVID, I'm sorry for the dog.
That's all right.
With COVID, my in-laws are elderly. I would like them to come over and sit outside of our house and eat. And when we sit out there, there are flies all over the food. It's horrible. It smells. And the most recent, and I understand Bob Grant's taking care of it and I really do appreciate that. But my most recent concern, there was just a storm and a bunch of branch fell down. And he pulled them kind of over to his yard, but he put caution tape and cones up around them. And so the bet of the neighborhood is how long do we think those cones are going to remain there? I'm hoping it's not long, but it is definitely a hazard to the children who get on the bus at that stop. You know, there are sticks all over the yard. If elderly people are walking their dogs, like they could trip, they could fall. It is a problem. So I appreciate all the council is doing and just wanted to reiterate what Peggy has said.
I've seen the property multiple times. I feel your pain. I would feel the same exact way you folks do if I lived next to it and we will take care of it. I will reiterate that this is a decades-long problem, but new council, new ideals, we will take care of it. You'll see progress. I can't ever give you a timeframe, but we will get on it. That I do promise.
Thank you.
Mr. Cully doesn't look convinced, but I'm convinced. Anyone else want to weigh in? Unmute yourself if you do, please. Any other topics for Public Works? Public Works, my goodness. Public discussion, sorry. Going once, going twice. All right, we'll go on to the solicitors report. Mr. Wills?
Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Couple things on my agenda this evening. One concerns the property 3607 Victor Avenue. Again, another property maintenance issue. We had been in court last week before Judge John Whalen of the Delaware County Court of Common Pleas. As a result of that hearing, we also had the code enforcement officer there, Mr. John Grant. But as a result of that hearing, the judge did issue an order requiring that property owner to fully comply with the International Property Maintenance Code, bring the property up to the Borough ordinances as required. And if not, if the property owner does not comply, judge gave the, gave the Borough some additional authority to go on the property itself, to its agents, cleanout companies, whatever, to go in there with a large dumpster and finally get that property cleaned up. I had suggested to Borough Council that the Borough consider a quote we received from Pro Cleanout Company in the amount of $750 to remove and haul away all the junk, trash and debris that is currently in the rear yard of that property. I think that is a very attractive quote. And if it is the pleasure of Borough Council, a motion would be in order this evening to approve the quote of Pro Cleanout Company. They are located right here in Brookhaven Borough. They are certainly one of our local businesses right here in town. And they are prepared to move on this as early as Monday, August the 10th, which is the deadline that the judge has given for that property owner to get into compliance.
Jay, I had a question. Will they be charged that amount to pay the Borough back?
Yeah, what we normally do in these cases is the judge also authorized the Borough to issue a municipal lien against the property owner for the cost that the Borough would incur in obviously hiring a cleanout company to perform that duty. So their cost, the attorney's fees to file the lien and so forth and so on, the court costs, all that would be recoverable by the Borough when the property is either the property owner seeks to refinance the mortgage. At that point, clearly it's an existing lien on the property. It runs with the property and eventually the Borough will be paid. And the Borough is also entitled to interest, annual interest on that lien that runs depending on how long it takes for the Borough to get paid. But it will eventually be paid. A municipal lien is a priority lien on the property. And so eventually we would get paid. And perhaps this is the process we may want to utilize for other properties in the Borough.
I want the same exact steps we used for this property, implemented for the other problem property that we're discussing tonight. And I believe as of Monday morning, that cleanout company will be on site if the property is still in the same condition, correct?
Assuming the Borough approves the quote this evening, I will be in contact with the company tomorrow. I then get ready on Monday morning, August the 10th. I'll suggest our code enforcement officer, Mr. Grant, also be on the property as well. The court order also authorizes the Brookhaven Police Department sure that this order is carried out. Sometimes we obviously get some resistance from the owner when the cleanout company and we start hauling away all the junk. But the order authorized Brookhaven Police Department obviously enforce this order.
I would ask the mayor and Chief Zebly for to bring an extra part-timer in to supervise that job for as long as it takes. We can add that to the municipal lien, correct?
Yeah.
The cost of police coverage. Considering the history, I would bring in a dedicated police officer just for this job. Please. Anything else, Jay?
I need a motion to approve that then.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anything else, Mr. Wills?
Yes, second issue I have for council's consideration concerns the preliminary slash final reverse subdivision and development plan for Brookhaven Storage. This was a plan submitted by Spring Lane LLC. It's located on 2.4 acres of undeveloped land on the south side of Brookhaven Road. The applicant is proposing to consolidate 22 lots totaling 2.4 acres into one lot and develop a three-story freestanding self-storage facility building on the property with 10 parking spaces. Last week, this was before the Brookhaven Borough Planning Commission. At that time last week, they voted unanimously to recommend conditional approval of this particular plan. This plan had also been before the Delaware County Planning Department two weeks ago. And at their meeting on July 7th, the Delaware County Planning Department has also recommended conditional approval of this plan. There is before council a proposed resolution approving the plan with approximately 10 enumerated conditions. And there is one waiver attached. Both myself and the Borough engineer are comfortable recommending conditional approval of this plan. And so if it is the pleasure of Borough Council, again, a motion would be in order to adopt this resolution approving the reverse division and land development plan for Brookhaven Storage.
Do we have a motion?
Sure moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried.
Third issue I'd like to bring to Borough Council's attention is the issue of stationary food truck vendors here in the Borough. As council is aware, over the past couple of meetings, there has been some interest among some of the property owners and homeowners stationary food truck vendors here in the Borough. I know the Borough Ordinance Committee is currently reviewing a draft of an ordinance that authorize the operation of stationary food truck vendors within the Borough. However, that's still a process.
Jay, hold on a minute. I have to mute everyone again. All right, unmute yourself and continue, sir. Sorry, go ahead.
Okay. And so if we adopt an ordinance that authorizes the operation of food truck burs here in Brookhaven, that may take a couple of months to do. And therefore Borough Council has asked me if it is possible to adopt a resolution authorizing the temporary operation of food truck vendors in the Borough. The short answer to that question is yes. Pursuant to the declaration of emergency disaster that was declared by Borough Council back in March, the Borough is in fact authorized to exercise certain powers under the Pennsylvania Emergency Services Code without regard to time-consuming procedures and formalities. And so I have prepared for Borough Council's consideration this evening a resolution that would permit the temporary operation of stationary food trucks here in the Borough. Again, there are approximately 15 various conditions I've attached to that. If it is Borough Council's consideration, certainly a motion would be in order to adopt this resolution. Again, pending a formal adoption of an ordinance that again, I know may take a couple of months. But in the interim, this would certainly provide the homeowners with some relief if they wouldn't like to see stationary food trucks operating here in the Borough.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Where would they be parked at, Mr. Wills?
That depends. And again, they would have to come in a one-day or a 24-hour permit and they'd have to designate the particular street that they're going to be on. And again, there are, don't know if you've had an opportunity, Charles, to take a look at this resolution, but there are many, many stipulations, conditions and requirements as to that a food truck may operate here in Park, or strike that, in Brookhaven Borough.
Jay, do they need to be invited?
There's no formal invitation requirement from a particular property owner. They would simply have to make, you know, application. And again, the one-day 24-hour application would be $100 hours per day. They could operate no more than two days per month. They would also have to pay an annual fee of $25 to the Borough Health Officer. There's also an annual stationary food truck inspection fee at a cost of $50. Again, is there a formal invitation process that they have to undertake?
Council was unanimous in requesting that this was by invite only. So say if Mr. Murphy here wanted, you know, a taco truck, Mr. Murphy would have to call them to avoid someone from setting up shop uninvited.
I agree with that.
And openly soliciting. That is definitely something we do not want.
I can add one additional certainly condition that again, the potential stationary food truck would have to be invited by a registered property owner in the Borough and that property owner would have to register as well at the Borough Municipal Building.
You could probably do that during the meeting. We can adopt it at the end of the meeting, corrections. It has to be done tonight.
If it was done this evening, it can be certainly adopted on that one additional
Okay.
change or amendment. And I could have that to Borough Council as early as first thing tomorrow morning. We could add an additional paragraph to the resolution, which would.
And what was that daily permit fee? How much was it?
$100 hours per day.
$100, that's what I thought, okay. And you already covered that they have to be inspected annually, just as any any business-serving food or selling.
And they'll require, you know, a health officer, annual license, a food truck inspector, $100 hours per day. And again, not to exceed two events per month.
Okay.
Every other week.
And if this gets out of hand, we can squash it, just so everyone knows, for any detractors. We're going to monitor it closely. Go ahead, Jay, sorry.
If Borough Council is dissatisfied with this program after 30 or 60 days, we could adopt another resolution simply rescinding this previous resolution. So it could be done at a 30-month cycle if we are dissatisfied with the operation of how things are going. And this is a very temporary stationary food truck resolution. It would permit us the month of September, the month of October, the month of November via another resolution to simply rescind it.
Okay, fair enough. So we ready to adopt, folks? You read the resolution, right?
Yes.
Yes, I did.
Who's taking the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried. Thank you for your work on this, Mr. Wills.
Next issue is Carman's. Again, this is a property that was scheduled to go to settlement in the last week or so. It's been pushed back until later this month in August. I still expect this to go to settlement. The conservator and the buyer are just with a few additional issues with the property, but I expect this property to go to settlement later this month. At the time it goes to settlement, the Borough will in fact recoup all of its fees, all the cost it has incurred since last year when we began legal action on this particular property. Next issue I have is Duncan.
Can I interrupt you for one second?
Yes.
With that Carman's property, would it be possible, maybe we could add the, you know, the taking care of the actual lawn and everything that's there? Here's weeds and other things growing all kind of crazy and out of control there. I got a few complaints about it.
I spoke to the conservator last week in no uncertain terms that I won't repeat at this evening's public meeting, but I made it clear in very plain, simple English language that that property, again, until it goes to settlement, from the exterior, the landscaping, must continue to be performed. must continue to be performed on a regular basis. Now, it's my understanding the landscapers went out last week. They were out there within 24 hours of the phone call that I made, and apparently the high weeds and brush were resolved. But as I told the conservator, until it actually limps to the new buyer, and again, if it takes a couple of weeks, that landscaper's going to have to continue to be out there on a regular basis. And I think they're aware of that, and I've also spoke to the conservator's attorney about that. So hopefully it won't become an issue in the future. If it does, again, the office manager will call me, and I will speak very constructively to the conservator that we need to move heaven and earth to keep that property, again, continue to be code compliant. Done a lot of repairs internally, but again, the exterior landscaping must continue to be done until it goes to settlement later this month.
Awesome, thank you. I just wanted some reassurance for the public.
Yes.
Jay, no word on what they want to put there?
No, I haven't spoken with the buyer. They're aware, you know, of the commercial zoning, you know, with that property. So obviously, whatever they're proposing to do must be in compliance with the Brookhaven Borough zoning code. If they're looking to, again, utilize the property for a purpose that is not enumerated in the zoning code, then they're going to have to get zoning relief before the Brookhaven Borough zoning hearing board. But at this point, I haven't spoken yet with the new buyer to see precisely what their use and purpose for that particular property is. It's a great site. It's got, you know, a lot of frontage right there on Edgemont Avenue, high traffic count, so it's ideal for a lot of commercial businesses that could go in that site and be profitable and be successful and pay their taxes to the borough.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions on Carmen's?
Nope.
All right. Next issue I have is the Dunkin' Donuts land development plan. Again, this was the old Wawa store. I'm pleased to report that the developer has in fact signed the developers agreement. He signed the public improvement security agreement. He signed the Stormwater Management Agreement. Both the Borough Council President and the office manager have also signed off on those agreements. So the developer is now prepared to start moving, and I don't know if building permits have yet to be issued by the borough, but developer's good to go. That property, I know, has been an eyesore for a long period of time in the borough. The property owner is expending significant amounts of money for that property into a conduits to an adjacent small restaurant. So hopefully those businesses will thrive in the borough as well and add to the business corridor over there along Edgemont Avenue. Other than that, Mr. President, I can report general progress, and that is the end of my report.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. President, I have nothing new to report this evening.
Mr. Chief Montella?
Thank you, Mr. President. Brookhaven Fire Company's July 2020 fire report. We had two fire incidents in the borough, 22 non-fire, 28 calls for mutual aid, four drills, for a total of 56 fire calls for the month. We had $300,000 of property endangered. We had no firefighter injuries or civilian injuries. Our manpower was 56 calls. We had average of 14 firefighters per call. We're in service for 538 personnel hours, 3,979 hours for the year. Our training was four training sessions, 25 average firefighters, 192 personnel hours logged to training, 1,404 for the year. Brookhaven Fire Company responded following incidents in Brookhaven Borough. We had a building fire at 4921 Grant Drive, contained to the chimney. We had a gas leak inside the Coburn Elementary School. We had six auto accidents in the borough at the following locations. We had one in the Giant Parking Lot, one in the Shopright Parking Lot, an accident in 3400 Block of Edgemont, an accident at Edgemont and Cambridge Road, another one at 4703 Edgemont, and another one at Brookhaven Road and Mount Vernon. Brookhaven Fire Company assisted Chester Township on two working building fires in the past week, one on the 1300 Block of Harshaw Road, and we had another one on the 1200 Block of Raynard Road. We assisted the Chester Fire Department on a second alarm building fire at 10th and Madison Street, and assisted the Garden City Fire Company on a commercial building fire at the Crumb Creek Valley condominiums. We assisted Upland Fire Company on an accident I-95 South in the rear Crozier Hospital and a building fire at 530 Front Street. We also assisted Middlestown Fire Company on a building fire at 915 Ridley Creek Road, and we assisted Rocky Run Fire Company on a building fire at 1083 West Baltimore Pike. Our monthly training was water supply operation, did some phone line operations and EMS patient packaging. Our fire company, quick update on the Brookhaven Fire Company COVID-19 practices and procedures. We did get confirmation that we actually transported three positive cases to the hospital. Our EMS personnel were notified of the possible exposures, but we are following our protocols and procedures and our PPA recommendations. So far, our crews are safe and secure, and all that information has been documented for their records and our personnel's records. Our ambulance report for July 2020, we had 144 ambulance calls. We transported 96 people to the hospital. We had 75 ALS transports, 69 BLS transports, and 82 local 52 alarms and 62 mutual aid alarms. For this year, the ambulance has responded to 908 calls for service so far. And that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. I need a motion to approve the July 20, July 2020 council workshop minutes.
Make a motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion's carried. We did announce last week at the workshop that Family Day was canceled. I think that's pretty much around the borough. Mrs. Heller or Mrs. Fuchs might want to touch on that again. And I have one item here. We have a benefit that we were, borough was giving certain employees.
I'll have to add that next.
Excuse me, who was that? Hold on, let me mute it all again. We have a benefit, a medical benefit, that we were issuing to certain employees. I believe we're giving it to one employee. It's a $100 weekly reimbursement in place of receiving or going on the borough's benefit plan. I believe that there was an issue with a new hire, and the question came up as to whether that new hire was entitled to this benefit. I want to grandfather this benefit. We can continue paying it to the person that's been receiving it for, I believe, 19 years. As no one else in the borough, no other borough employee receives it, but I don't see paying $5,000 a year to someone for not going on our benefit plan. I think I've discussed that with council before. We don't have to take action tonight, but I just want to let you know what I want to do with it, to digest that, and we can make a decision between now and the September council meeting.
You said that was 100 a month?
$100 a week.
A week.
$100 a week. Comes to about $4,800 a year. So I just found out about it. And again, the employee that currently receives it and has been receiving it, I believe, 18, 19 years, whatever it was, can be grandfathered, but I don't think we should pay that going forward, to tell you the truth. I honestly don't see why you would work for the borough and take another benefit package because it's kind of hard to beat, especially in today's climate. But, you know, once in a while, you're going to come across something. That's all I have for now. Mrs. Leslie is off on vacation. Let's go to Ms. Sewicki. Janice, unmute yourself, sorry. One more tap. There you go.
Okay, I do have the bill list for August. It should say final at the top of your paper, and the general fund total is $45,529.06. The sewer fund is $23,610.15. The trash fund is $250.46 for a total bill list for August, $69,389.67. So I'm going to make a motion so we can pay our bills for August.
Give a second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion's carried.
The only other thing I wanted to bring up is the flu shots for the borough. September 24th, 10 o'clock to 12:00 p.m. in the community room. If residents can't attend, they really should either contact a doctor or, I think, the local pharmacies to have flu shots available for people. Just, it might be a good thing to have. Now, we have talked about the budget, and we will have a report probably at September's meeting for, we had a meeting today and we're still working on it. So once we have something formed up, we will have a notice to the council, and then we'll probably put it on the September bill list for the public. Thank you.
Mrs. Fuchs?
Thank you, Mr. President. The ordinance committee met in the council room on July 16th, and the topic of discussion was the creation of a food truck ordinance. The committee is evaluating a new ordinance. Mr. Wells provided us a copy of another town's ordinance that's very detailed, so we're going to build on that, and we will keep everyone up to date on our progress. The tech committee, Hector, Sheri, and myself, we have a Zoom meeting with Ecode on August 13th to get an understanding of how the program works and what the end result will look like to anyone searching for specific ordinance or code on our website. As Mr. Heller said previously, Family Day is canceled, and the reason for our decision was, there were various reasons. Excessive amount of people, more than 250, six-foot distancing, masks that are required, probably, I would assume any seniors would be afraid to attend, so now we're, you know, we're going to have an event that many of our residents wouldn't be able to go to or would be afraid to go to. So it's just in the best interest of everyone that we cancel Family Day this year. Community news, the vaccination clinic is scheduled for May 18th, 2021, in our gym, and that is all that I have. Thank you.
Mr. Pabst?
Thank you, Mr. President. Real short, July 28th, we had a workplace safety meeting. We discussed the verification of the child safety reports for all the borough employees. We also verified that the insurance regulations covers the checking of the driver's license for all the employees that are operating employee vehicles. We also discussed building security, since our new hiree of the Public Works, Sean Guthrie, was a locksmith in his past life. He is going to start a program where we can rekey and provide a little bit more security to our public, to our borough property that we have at the various fields. There was a camera replaced. I think the Public Works will be taking care of that with Mr. Hector. That's about it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Vaskus?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to echo what George said with the, Sean Guthrie has been a real godsend to the Public Works Department for us. He's been taking care of a lot of things that we haven't done before. So let me just jump into the Public Works July report. We have three sewer backup calls, one at the 4900 Edgemont Ave at the LA Fitness. There was a, the issue was on the shopping center. Bob Grant notified Catania Engineering, and the sanitary sewer flow was, overflow was filled, or, I'm sorry, the sanitary sewer overflow paperwork was filed with the DPD by Mr. Catania. The second one was 4313 Mount Vernon. Issue was on the homeowner, no problems in the street. The third one was 3436 Janie Ave. The issue was with the homeowner as well. There's no issues for us. We went through the parks. We have all the security cameras are now up to date, functional, no issues at all. We had a new security camera installed at Durkin. We replaced one security camera at Eaton. We went through all the buildings, checked out Memorial Sands in Eaton, all the parks, went through, make sure everything's kosher, no vandalization or any issues with the buildings themselves. We fixed the flagpole at Memorial Park. We re-zipped tied the backstop for the backstop net at Durkin, and we had RJ Tree Service come in and remove a dead tree from Eaton Park right next to the walking trail. And then, just in general, for the Public Works, we had all the flags raised up. We had the Public Works team out. They repainted some stop bars and painted the words "stop" at 14 intersections. We had, we had a, excuse me, an inlet damaged by the CVS, which I think we're going to have to take care of. I'm not sure if Mr. Catania will include that in his report or not today, but I believe we're going to wind up having to pay for it to cover that. So I'm sure he'll make that motion. We had some trees pruned at Cambridge and Spring Street. They were covering the street signs, so we don't have any accidents on our end. And we also pruned some trees at Trimble and Edward. They're also covering the stop signs. The grass cutting has been continuing as usual. Same thing with the trash removal at all the parks. We did have a down telephone pole at Whitley and Scola. We were called out at night. That was taken care of. There was also check for a damaged pole on Brookhaven Road, the result of was a damaged traffic light at Brookhaven and Wooderville. And year-to-date, right now, we have 500 PA one-call tickets answered, and the month of July, we have 39. That's all I have for, oh, I'm sorry, no, I have some more. We also had a call out to the county, the Delaware County Solid Waste Authority, about leaf collections. We were told there was no leaf collections to be received by the county. So we're looking at taking measures just in case we're not able to dispose of the leaves in our normal manner. John had reached out to the county, said they will take bags, bag leaves, but only if they're in with the trash. So that'll increase our cost on the trash in, which will be a big problem. They also gave us a lead to maybe meet with Lim Villa to see if we can dump there, because I'm sure they'll want to use it as compost. Dave will be meeting with them next week. I'll have some more information with that. But we're trying to be very proactive with this issue and not, you know, not let this fall between the cracks, and then we're stuck with a whole bunch of leaves. Also, I wanted to add that I do want to eventually get an add-out for temporary help for Public Works. The dates that we're going to need people for the temporary help would be, Dave gave me the dates of, bear with me one second, I just lost my spot. Now, I'm looking for possibly two candidates around November 9th through December 18th. I'll have more information with that. I just wanted to let everybody know that that's, that will be happening soon.
I would suggest the Labor Service, so we don't get into the same situation we were in before where we hired seasonal workers and we ended up retaining them. You know, it's not fair to the borough or the workers, but.
Well, I think we have a lot more verbiage that's clear as temporary help now, and it's going to be a slotted timeline. So I think that should address that issue, whereas before we did not have that. Secondly, with zoning, that's all I have for Public Works. Now, with zoning, I might have a lead on a new zoning hearing board member. I'm reaching out to him in his interest. John had found some, the updated zoning hearing books in the Borough Hall. So those will be distributed at our first meeting of the year. Whenever that will happen, I am unsure. And that is all I have from my report today.
Let me add one thing, Hector. I did talk to Public Works about a spotted lander flight eradication program since the state and the Fed kind of bailed out on us with COVID. If you remember from last year, they were supposed to continue their their spraying and their removal of trees, certain trees that the land and fly favor. So we're not going to get a dime from either this year because of budget shortfalls within the state and the Fed completely stopped contacting me. So Public Works is going to identify as many of the the this bug's preferred trees, the tree of heaven on Borough and property, and we're going to slowly remove those trees. It's going to take probably a couple of years, but we're going to do it. Anything not within reach of a wire or a building or a structure, we're going to remove and cut and remove from sight. And I had one other thing, but it just escaped. Maybe it'll come back to me. All right. Thank you, sir.
Actually, I forgot one more thing. Also, the Public Works team came down Edgemont Avenue, cleaned out all the trash in the stormwater inlets and took care of all those, especially the prom areas by the shopping centers and Edgemont and Brookhaven Road.
And that is exactly what I, you just, you just jogged, you just jogged my brain. I did call Leanne Krueger, as I said I was going to do during the workshop last week regarding Pendot punting the financial responsibility for the sewers and anything under their roads. And she was unaware of any change whatsoever, and I am do a call to Chuck Catania. So I'll call Chuck tomorrow and talk about that. Leanne wants to follow up with that. On that, so she can, she can help us out. So I don't know if it's going to go anywhere, but we'll try like to get it done. Anything else, Hector?
That's all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Sir, Mrs. Heller.
Okay, I only have a few things. Mrs. Fuchs talked about the technology and communications meeting, so there's nothing more for that. The police committee met on Tuesday, July twenty-first, twenty-first via Zoom. Myself, Chief Sebly, met with Consultant Roseanne McGrath on Wednesday, seven twenty-nine, to discuss police matters, community engagement programs, as well as training for the police staff. Just to add for the rec board meeting, the summer concerts that are scheduled for August have been canceled due to COVID. And we also discussed with softball, baseball and basketball, there are twenty-twenty-one projects that would require any type of budgetary numbers to be submitted as soon as possible so we can get that to the Budget Committee for their review and approval. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mr. Catania.
Thank you. I submitted my written report. There's a couple of things I just want to mention. The twenty-twenty street resurfacing program, this contract was awarded to A. F. Damon Company. They are tentatively set to start on or about August seventeenth, and we will provide a notice when we get the actual date they're going to start. Under the streetlight maintenance, maybe two years ago, I think, the borough participated in the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission Program to upgrade all its L. Streetlights to LEDs. They, it was an audit which was performed by D. V. R. P. C. recently. And it shows that the cost-saving goals was met and actually slightly exceeded for savings of twenty-one thousand, five hundred eighty-seven dollars for two thousand nineteen. That basically is just going back to them to cover the cost of the installation of the of these lights themselves. And after, I think, a five-year period, we should start seeing that savings in on the borough's end. We did find out that there is a ten-year equipment warranty that is set to expire in February of twenty, it says twenty eighteen, but it's twenty twenty-eight. Act five thirty-seven plan, the borough received a copy of a Act five thirty-seven plan update. This is for the Del Cora sale to Aqua. And I'll provide more information at a workshop meeting, but that is on the, should be on the planning commission's agenda for their August eighteenth meeting. And then three things that require some action or consideration from council would be the annual maintenance contract. This is the street and sewer maintenance contracts. Those are set to expire at the end of August. And the current contracts have a three-month extension. I would ask that council authorize a three-month extension and also authorize bids for new contracts.
You wanted to chime in, I think. You unmuted yourself.
Yeah, I have a question. What is the time period, Mr. Catania, for that, those bids?
The current contract, if we grant the three-month extension, will expire, I believe it's like November twenty-fourth.
Okay.
The it'll start November twenty-fourth, expire December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-one. And then we'll have optional annual extensions in that bid.
Okay.
Part of that contract.
Do we need a motion?
Please.
I'll make the motion.
I'll make that motion for Mr. Catania.
Do I have a second? I believe I heard Hector a second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Questions carried.
The second item is the, there's a storm sore inlet in the intersection of Edgemont Ave and Cambridge Road. A small sinkhole developed next to that inlet. It was inspected by Public Works and determined that the brick inlet is partially collapsed. So we're going to ask for authorization to repair that storm sore inlet.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Questions carried.
And finally, very similar story, Edgemont Ave and Upland Road, storm sore inlet, damaged. Public Works inspected it, needs to be repaired. We do have some, I'm going to say parts available from Shepherd Street that we're going to utilize on that inlet.
What's, what's, what's the cost of that project about? Minus, minus the the parts that we salvaged from Shepherd Street?
I want to say it's going to be around two thousand to twenty-five hundred dollars.
Okay, so, so, okay, so we're paying that in lieu of Pico paying it for now. All right.
Yeah.
Well, I'm glad you're able to get the parts from the Shepherd Street project. There's a little bit.
Little bit, very little bit. So I'm going to ask for authorization to repair that storm sore inlet as well.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye, carried.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Chief Zabli, are you on?
Why can I never see those?
I am here. Can you hear me?
I muted you, Janice. We don't need storytime again. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, Brookhaven Police from March, July, twenty twenty, we were assigned five hundred eighty-five CAD assignments to Delcom. The more noteworthy incidences were three burglary incidences that were domestic related. Took all three ended up in an arrest. There's fourth, one night in Hilltop, four thefts from unlocked motor vehicles. One retail theft incident that was yielded arrest. Two, two other theft-type incidences and one attempted theft. Three fraud incidences, two unauthorized use of automobiles, four criminal mischiefs. Two narcotic arrests, one DUI arrest, three public drunk arrests, one disorderly subject. Our officers investigated twenty-three suspicious conditions and answered twenty-two disturbances, which include domestics. We took nineteen vehicle accident reports, eighteen assist other departments, and six arrest warrants were served. Total fifteen adults were arrested, two juveniles. Twenty-six citations were issued or filed and twelve warnings were issued for traffic. In brief, officer suburbs have been conducting drug surveillance on a property that is, that has complaints received against it. I'd like to extend a good job to Officer Barth and Detective Havich with the burglary assault incident that occurred on Meadow Brook Lane. And thank you to Officer T. Philak for coming in at a moment's notice to assist with the prisoner who ended up finding himself in the hospital because of the incident and he was arrested. Also, for the other burglary incident, we have a good job to Officer Eastman, Duff, Havich and August for their thoroughness efforts. And arrest of the individual involved in the other domestic-related burglary where the subject was arrested for assault and stalking. I wanted, didn't get a chance to be at last month's meeting to apologize because for the Fourth of July. I was working with one other officer for shift. In a very short amount of time, we were overwhelmed with fireworks complaints. I know a lot of people had a problem that we didn't get there fast enough. We just had dozens of complaints literally in a forty-five minute period. I want to remind people, the residents, about the fireworks laws. They are, as stated, only persons eighteen years of age and order and cannot be under the influence of alcohol. They can only use consumer-grade fireworks now on private property with permission from the owner, and they must be a hundred fifty feet away from any and all occupied structures. It's not to be used in any public property, which includes streets and parks. So pretty much in the whole borough, it was really not a place you can use fireworks. And also, please be considerate. You know, there's, there's veterans that live in town or hometown heroes with PTSD and a lot of residents with dogs that can't handle the fireworks. Also, moving on, we have officers are utilizing their personal protective equipment such as masks and are staying healthy amid the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Would extend a thank you to Vince, the owner of Summit Health Pharmacy at thirty-four hundred Edgemont for his donations of procedural masks and hand sanitizers to help protect our officers. You will see soon, officers will have a new book. We got on to, we got on the uniform vendor to fulfill on our order that we made last fall. And we were able to get most of our uniforms this week. So you'll see guys in the new book, new uniform. He did have to go scrounging from other vendors to get to fulfill the order, but he got most of the order to us. Also, you'll, part of that new look, you will have a, officers are going to allow have facial hair. So it'll be a neatly trimmed and presentable facial hair. The goal of this is to get away from the sterile and stern look of a police officer. So our officers are more approachable and more relatable and bi-humanizing the officers. So we're going to give that a run, see how that goes. Currently, I'm reviewing policies and working with the consultant, as Ms. Heller said. Working on admission statement and developing an exposure control plan for bloodborne pathogens, which I found to be missing so far from the policies procedure manual. We are also working with consultant to develop a written standard for hiring of part-time officers. And we'll be conducting hiring process soon. I did address a few monitor personnel issues during the month of July to improve patrol and improve relations with the community. I have developed the response and action plans relevant to issues that came up during the month, such as protesters and the potential for civil unrest. There was a protest incident last week. And that went peaceful and there was no issues, like to thank my extra officers for coming in to make sure that all went well. We did purchase flashlights, bank chargers, and we're working on getting our duty gear up to par. Also, wet and conducted firearms certification training to officers August, Martin, Barth and Havich. Currently, I am researching trainings and certifications to enhance the operations of the department to enrich our officers and better serve the community. The, the additional goal is to address spanned control issues, improve timeliness of trainings and ensure the seamless operation of this department. Trainings and certifications include firearms instructors, course, certified field training officers and the escalating training to just name a few. And also, lastly, look for us in the next week or so, depending on the weather. We'll be out in the evening doing something fun for the community. So keep your ear out for us and come out and get your treat when you hear us come. You'll know it's us when you hear us. So I know that that'll be all, Mr. President.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Leslie. Unmute yourself so we can hear that beautiful speaking voice here.
Coming to you, brother. Just a couple of things right here. As we saw, the tires and the trucks are gone from the Audi shopping center. I guess that's a question either for Mr. Wells or Mr. Catania. On a right to know, can they go to settlement or property transfer on a right to know a commercial property? I'm going to throw Walgreens out there. They, they're asking for a right to know. I don't know. They're trying to circumvent our inspections on.
That would be a question for Mr. Wells, I believe.
Okay, Mr. Wells then. Reason being, I got another email from the third-party firm looking for a right to know. I don't know. They're trying to circumvent our inspection. I don't want the borough or the inspectors losing out on any inspection fees that may be coming to them or the borough. So can they go to a settlement or property transfer on a right to know? You were in on some of those emails, I believe.
Yeah, what I'll suggest you do, Charles, could you forward to me? If there's a right-to-know request, forward a copy to me as well as any underlying emails concerning the situation, and I'll render a written legal opinion to you shortly.
Okay, I believe Mr. Catania was in on some of those emails. Were you, Mr. Catania, from Walgreens?
Not that I recall, but they need an inspection. I mean, entire property is transferred and needed to go through the process, which is the property needs to be inspected to make sure it's up to code regardless when it was last inspected. It's only valid for the day that the inspection was completed. So if time has elapsed since that property was transferred, they need to get a new inspection. It's plain and simple. That's it.
Okay, I get what, I, I have a couple of emails I downloaded. I printed them off. I'll get with Matt tomorrow morning and I'll give them to Matt and he could forward them on to you, Mr. Wells.
Great, thank you.
Because he reached out again today about the property. They're looking for this right to know. I don't know. They're trying, like I said, they're trying to circumvent our inspection process here or not. Okay, that's that, and that's about it. Just make sure everybody got their cell phones charged up tonight. We got a big storm coming tomorrow, people here in the borough. So that's the end of my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Janice, is Mr. Hampton in the council chamber? Well, now you broke it.
I'm sorry. No, he's not. He left about forty-five minutes ago.
Okay, all right.
I think he went home. It wasn't.
We are, we are spared Mr. Hampton's report for the evening. That'll take us into the second public discussion. Anyone for public discussion? Unmute yourself, please, before speaking.
I just wanted to say something real quick. I had a couple of residents.
Name and address. This is public discussion. All right, go ahead, Mrs. Fuchs.
Thank you. They were saying that around the walking trail, there's a few dead trees. And they wanted me to say something tonight at the meeting. So I don't know if that would be Ms. Sewicki or Public Works, but there's some.
I think it's, I think it's sector.
So with some of the dead trees, if they are not blocking any paths or anything and we, it is a cost at the, for the borough to be removing them, as long as they're not endangering anybody's safety or whatnot, we're letting nature take its course in order to save money. And that's kind of what we've been doing for a while now. And I talked to Dave and he kind of agrees with it as well. I know we've gotten some complaints about it, but for us to spend money for something to be removed.
Is this along the walking path, the newer trees that that we planted when the walking path was was put in?
I believe so, yes.
I mean, they're not that big. I don't see why you can't just grab a chainsaw and cut them down, but whatever. I'll ask Public Works about it.
Yeah.
I'm up at Borough Hall. I'll take a look at, look at them on my way out. Who's whispering? Is that you, Mayor?
Me.
I think it was a curse word, too. All right, Tom Dykes, are you trying to speak? Is that a no? Anyone else for Public Works, public discussion? Say that one more time. Is twice for public discussion? Mr. Murphy? I cannot hear you, Mr. Murphy.
Oh, no. Can you hear me?
Now I can. Name and address.
Dan Murphy, one fourteen, Bradbury Road.
How are you, sir?
I just want to say thank you to passing that resolution. That's going to be wonderful. Once we can get everything all buttoned up with that. Is it possible for me to receive a copy of that via email or printout or something once that's all buttoned up?
Absolutely. When, once Mr. Will sends me the amended resolution tomorrow, I will email it to you. Text me your email address. I'm not sure if I have it or not.
All right, you got it. Thank you very much.
Text, text it to me and I'll get it to you, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, thank you very much.
It was our pleasure. Anyone else for public discussion? Going once, going twice? Public discussions closed? Any, anyone from council? Someone's trying to speak, I believe. I don't know if anyone else can hear that person. Let me try unmuting everyone. All right, one more try for public discussion. I guess not? All right. Public discussion's closed. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.